I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, these chairs don't slide, they're not in here, do they? Our mission is to educate, empower, and inspire excellence. We do have registration for anyone who would like to address the board on any of the actionable items. There are forms over here at the end of the table near our attorney. Fill out that form, return it to the board table, and we will recognize you at the appropriate time. We also have public comment at the end of the meeting for any topic anyone would like to bring up to the board. Same process, fill out the form and return it to the board table. All board members were provided background information in preparation for today's meeting, and this meeting is being livestreamed, and we welcome all those who are watching us remotely. So with that, we'll begin with our student staff presentations. We have the Indiana GPS and GPS Plus diploma presentation.
So Dr. Ellen, as I just asked me to, there's, obviously, this is the hot topic right now. Everybody's in panic mode. Personally, I just feel a lot of people are overreacting. It's not horrible. So on the next slide, just, you know, like what I'm saying, oh, do I have to? Oh, you got it, okay.
Say, if you point at him, he'll turn it.
I mean, we're going to still push our kids into a traditional, you know, four-board sequence, which is a college-bound, you know, type thing. It'll help later on, like if kids aren't successful. So for example, you know, we have freshmen usually take geography or history, yet for some reason they don't pass it, and it's junior, senior year, and they're struggling, and they're more work-based. The GPS actually gives us flexibility to not worry about having to recover that geography credit, as opposed to then we can use their work-based credits. So, like I said, we're going to still push kids into a traditional college prep, and then just kind of monitor it and see how things go. So even though like geography and history and econ and, you know, chemistry, even though those classes aren't technically required by the state, we're still going to have students take them, so we don't have to worry about that. When you guys look at the link to the GPS checklist, basically what I did there was I just took all of the credits that typically, all the classes that a student would typically take, and then I labeled on whether they are credit-bearing according to the new diploma or if they're point-bearing according to the new diploma. So like I said, I'm really not panicked about this part. There's a couple pieces I do that I'll let you know. On the next slide, just again, Sue, this is going to be a comment in type of course sequencing. There is the new computer science requirement that starts, obviously, those kids are going to be here next year as freshmen in '25, '26. We're going to be scheduling them in about four or five months. That one panics me a little bit because we have 500 kids to get through this semester-long class, and the licensing, there's, the state has gone back and forth with it a little bit. It could be a business license, it could be a math license, it could be a computer science license. So we're still trying to figure that piece of it out. The, I did approach both middle schools. They don't have the staff to be able to offer that class at the middle school yet because it can be taken for high school credit, which like preparing for college and careers helps alleviate the high school tremendously, being that the middle schools are taking care of that. You know, if that is something at some point that the middle schools could offer computer science, it'll help us here at the high school. But we'll just kind of play it by ear and see how things go. And then on the next slide, these are kind of some of my challenges that we're a little bit concerned about. The post-secondary readiness competencies have always been a challenge for our students. Out of the nine pathways, like five of them pertain just to high-achieving students. It's the academic honors or the technical honors, it's AP courses, it's dual-credit courses, it's SAT scores. Those are all combined, you know, your high-achieving students are going to do all of those. But our work-bound students are the ones that we are concerned about because they do have to take those career tech classes. It's very, we're limited in what we can offer, partially due to there just aren't people in the industry that can teach the classes or who would want to teach the classes to our students. So we have definitely worked with a couple of different places, the steel mills and things like that, trying to expand some opportunities. So the post-secondary readiness component does concern me because that will still continue being a requirement. The work-based learning component, we just need to make sure that we thoroughly plan it out and everything. That's going to take staff to be able to supervise those kids, to be able to make those connections in the community, making sure that our students are showing up to work, that they are producing the work like they're supposed to be doing, and they have the work ethic and that whole component. So work-based learning will be a little bit of a challenge. And again, the competencies proposed by the state are very limited, so there are things like the attendance rate, and you have to do an external, like volunteer work and things like that. So the state is saying, like, you have to have three of four of these, and when you have that kind of a limitation, for some students, it'll be difficult. And then the amount of hours that are in the GPS Plus, which would be like above and beyond what the regular diploma is. And then the next slide. So I just gave you a little bit of data there. So with this current class that just graduated, about 55% completed a CTE concentrator. So that's where my concern goes to when over half of our kids are having to rely on that and we don't have the space for it. 20% use the ASVAB scores. With the ASVAB, they do have to sign an intent-to-enlist form per the state, so that limits us there. About 25% of the graduating class use those higher-end qualifiers. So, you know, again, too, just goes back to my concerns. And then, I think there's just one more. So changes the funding, so this is probably, you know, something we do have to keep an eye on. So currently, each academic or technical honors diploma does give us some money from the state, depending on if the student's on free or reduced lunch or not, you know, that shows us how much the dollar amount is. The college credit earns, you know, gives us information there, too, or gives us money there. On average, 17 to 19% of our students, you know, earning an academic or a technical honors diploma, so we're talking about 65 to 90 kids each school year, so that kind of gives you a dollar amount figure of how much we're going to lose because the new diploma does not, it doesn't re, it doesn't fund academic and technical honors because it no longer exists. So that, that component will be out. We awarded about 1,039 IB Tech credits that were just our in-house, not including our Porter County Career Center credits that were earned. Through Purdue and IU, we did earn about 1,194, so about 248 students had credits through there, and then the Porter County Career Center IB Tech ones were still to be determined. The revised plan gives us $1,200 for each student who completes the Indiana College Core. So the Indiana College Core are those 30 college credits. We partnered with IUN this past school year, so we just started rolling out Indiana College Core. They, IUN has been fabulous with helping us and everything. I cannot thank them enough with everything that they've put out for our kids and everything. So really, the only additional funding we're going to start getting is right now going to be for the College Core or the college credits. It's going to be the higher of the two. So if they earn 30 college credits and don't earn the College Core, it's going to be $1,200. If they earn the College Core, it's going to be $1,200 per kid, so, yeah. So we, just again, something we just got to keep our eye on and see how this impacts us moving forward. And I believe that's maybe it?
Mm-hmm.
Is that my last slide? Right, okay. Any questions?
Well, thank you. So, and I'm glad you're looking ahead to that. So we do know, it's not lock in stone yet, right? There's still some, I just watched the Indiana, the Board of Education meeting the other day, and there's still a lot of comments, and there's a big push to not eliminate the current diplomas, or certainly not the academic honors, and replace it with these. So it'll be interesting to see how it shakes out. Shauna, or Dr. Finley, I don't know, do you know anymore? I mean, is the ISBA, where their stance is at on this?
We had the opportunity of meeting with Dr. Jenner at our June board meeting, and it sounds like it's going to go.
Yeah.
It sounds like it's a no-brainer. They have the legislation on board and all of the other key stakeholders. It sounds like you're on the right path and just planning for it.
Yeah. Yeah, like I said, I mean, the biggest concern for me is they need to expand those competencies. There has to be more choices, given different student populations and what, you know, what will actually work for them. So, but, I mean, like I said, I feel like we're in a good place. We're, you know, I don't feel like we're going to be panicked or anything, you know, the only issue will be the, the computer science that concerns me. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Excuse me. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, Ms. Garcia, thank you for that presentation. You made reference to that computer science program. Did I hear you say that you would like to see the middle school students be more prepared, and how would that happen?
It really, it just depends on where we get this, where we can get the staffing for it. I know the middle schools are kind of restricted to, with some changes within our scheduling of trying to fit, because they would have to fit in as like a specials rotation. So like, for example, this past, or this coming up, no, this past school year, there were about 200 or so kids that didn't get prepared for college and careers because it wouldn't fit into their rotations, which was fine, and, you know, we just picked them up here. So like I said, I mean, we could also probably offer it as a summer school course to help alleviate some of that stress on the staffing on the school year.
So if I could just clarify, the, what she was saying is that that course can be offered as a middle school course, and then that would take that off of the, the stress of scheduling those students in the, in the high school. Currently, that would take away, well, the most logical places would be the replacement of Project Lead the Way, and we feel strongly about that as well. And so there's a, there's a difficult conversation to be had, and we feel as if our kids are getting a great deal of those competencies through Project Lead the Way, but they don't get the credit that the, that the state would offer. So there's a bit of a conversation going on there. But what, as, as Ms. Garcia said, we are certainly interested in trying to figure out how we can better give kids opportunities to take that class so that they can have more, more opportunities at the high school level to have more classes that they would like rather than, that are required.
And I do appreciate that the state is open to looking at different, what, what restricts me often with the scheduling of classes at the high school level is the licensing endorsements that teachers have to have. Like, for example, adult roles and responsibilities has to have a FACS endorsement. There's a handful of FACS teachers, you know, but yet, I don't understand why a social studies teacher couldn't teach that, or why that can't be any licensed. So they do, it does appear with the computer science that they are looking at expanding, you know, it's not like a math or a computer science endorsement, a business endorsement or various other things, somebody who just has experience with computer science.
The difficulty that I would agree, that Ms. Garcia and the high school are well-prepared, but I want you to remember that it's, because people will say it's not implemented until 2029, but those kids are going to be scheduling their high school courses this February. So it's coming, coming faster than you may think.
Yeah.
So how prepared are the counselors at the high school level to be able to schedule all of this?
I think they'll be fine because we're still going to push the incoming freshmen into a traditional schedule. Their, you know, PE is probably going to be questionable on, you know, what will, whether or not it'll be needed and things like that with these new changes. But like I said, we're still going to push them into biology, algebra, geography or history, their English, college and careers if they haven't taken it yet. So I don't think there's really going to be a whole lot of changing in what they're doing for freshman year. I think what's going to happen is it'll come down to more junior and senior year, but the counselors really are going to have to work more one-on-one with each individual student, and it'll have to become more individualized for each of them to see, like I said, because we have a lot of kids at work, starting even like sophomore year. So, you know, but now it's kind of nice because now we can give them credit for that. So it's really, it's helping us in some ways. But yeah, so it's, I, I think the counselors will be fine. I think they're a little bit panicked and probably stressed out right now just because it's a change. But I think once they get in there, they're going to see it's really not going to be a whole lot of, lot of difference. Okay?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I do have a question, though, for Dr. Stevens, because there's so much alignment with PLTW and computer science. Is there an opportunity to lift a teacher up in this process? Because the state sometimes has some resources to give professional development for them to get that endorsement.
Certainly, yeah. And actually, as, as Ms. Garcia mentioned, there's several different avenues for a teacher to teach that course in particular. So the, the difficulty is not as, as much as when she said the teacher had to be a FACS teacher, and she said there are very few of those. So the difficulty is not the so much finding a person to do it, it's finding a slot in their schedule to hold that, and yet still honor the Project Lead the Way because there are just not that many hours in the day for a middle school schedule, and we feel very strongly about other things as well. And so it's, it's certainly, you would know, but middle school scheduling is not as wide open as you may think. There are several requirements that have to be put in, and it's more cookie cutter than we would want it to be, but when, when you have certain rules, you follow the rules.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda the board would recommend this evening? If not, we have our superintendent's consent agenda, which has got our personnel report for July the 22nd, the donations report, claims report, facility use request report. Do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Melata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Next, we have our board's consent agenda with our minutes of our June 24th discussion, regular board meeting, and the minutes of our June 24th public work session.
Can I ask a favor of you?
Yeah.
So Mr. Shabloski's here, did you want to speak at all?
Certainly.
Well, yeah. Since you're, since you're here, thank you.
You are more than welcome.
Yeah, please step up to the podium.
You're more than welcome.
So if I could just introduce for a second.
Yeah.
Based on the, your, your approval of our consent agenda, which happened to be have the personnel report, Mr. John Shabloski will be moving from an assistant principal at Willow Creek to the principal at Ailsworth. Mr. Shabloski had also taught for us in the elementary level before going to the middle school, so he's got a great deal of experience there as well. I have heard nothing but rave reviews for Mr. Shabloski at the middle school level, and we are very happy to have him moving into that opportunity. Of course, we'll miss, we will miss Ms. Taria Taylor, quality leader, and she's moving on for an opportunity and a central office opportunity, and happy for her, but we're also happy to have John moving into individual building leadership. So with that, I don't think John will be any, at any shortage for words. From what I understand, he's also a thespian on the side, so I'm sure he's got a speech figured out, so.
Well, Portage Township Schools trustees, thank you very much for this opportunity. As Dr. Stevens already mentioned, I've, I taught at the elementary level in grades one, two, three, and five for all of my teaching career, and then I moved on to, when I moved to the administrative side, I've served as an assistant principal at Willow Creek Middle School, and during this time, every move that I've made here in Portage Township Schools has brought me closer to more people. That means more Portage Township families, more Portage Township teachers, employees, and most importantly, more Portage Township children. And, and I believe I've had the opportunity to meet each of you and serve with you in some capacity or another, last year on the Strategic Planning Committee, and I've seen you around the schools and around Willow Creek Middle School, and you've come to the meetings there. I will miss the staff and the students and the parents of Willow Creek Middle School. But like I said, every move I've made has allowed me to serve Portage Township Schools in a greater capacity, in a wider capacity. Portage Township Schools has been the gift that keeps on giving to me, and I thank you very much for this opportunity to continue serving. Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you very much.
I can't get up. Not now.
These chairs don't slide.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations on the promotion, and we know you'll do great things at Ailsworth.
Thank you.
I'd like to also congratulate you for being now principal at the elementary level and having that same position in the past myself. It's very, very rewarding. What I do know about you is that you put children first and that you totally, you just care about children, and relationships are very important to you, so I know that you are going to be very successful.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thanks, man.
And I, and I want to second that, Wilma, because we have a relationship because of the last kid, right?
Oh, yeah. God, tell Finley.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Finley. But I want to say thank you. I've seen you in action, navigate the middle school kids, so you're going to have fun in the elementary school, I'm just saying.
More fun.
More fun, right? I, I will tell you that I've seen him mitigate lots of different nuances with middle schoolers, and he is so calm, so calm. So I hope you continue with the same calmness, as a matter of fact, I know you will, and when they're crying and their noses are running, I can see you right now being the wonderful father figure that you, for these elementary school kids, as you've been to the middle schooler. So thank you for continuing to stay with us.
Absolutely. And I will add, really quick, my entire educational career has been at Portage Township Schools. I never left the district, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the board's consent agenda. No, thank you for that. We have our minutes from the June 24th meeting and our minutes from our June 24th public work session. Do we have a motion to approve the board's consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion is second, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Melata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Okay, next we have, I know we don't have any old biz, oh, we have board development, board reports. Does anybody have a report for us this evening? Okay. Old business, we have none. New business, we have the approval to publish notice of hearings of our potential projects. Dr. Stevens, can you explain, please?
Certainly. This in particular is not the hearing. This is simply to advertise that we will be having a discussion that will occur on August 12th at the board, before the board meeting, I believe, is it not scheduled, prior to the August 12th board meeting? And that will be the, where that, this, that project is discussed in length, at length, and people can have their time to ask questions and bring forth any, any understandings.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the publisher, publishing of notice of hearings for the potential projects?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Melata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Next, we have our acceptance of the Impact Library Grant opportunity for South Haven.
So the Impact Library is the little free library books, and that would provide a small housing where people can, can basically trade books back and forth in the South Haven area. I'll, I'll read to you what it would include. A fully-assembled composite library, which is made of recycled plastic, a charter sign in English and Spanish and French, the wooden post for installation, includes all that hardware, a set of three wooden panels, finish for extra water protection, a starter set of diverse books, a steward's, steward's guide booklet, and paid shipping costs.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the Impact Library Grant opportunity?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second, any discussion?
I learned that this nonprofit organization is based in St. Paul, Minnesota, and their vision is to have little free libraries in every community and a book for every reader. They believe that all people are empowered when the opportunity to discover a personally relevant book to read is not limited by time, space, or privilege. So I want to thank Kimmy Swisher for writing the grant, and I'm happy that it was accepted.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Our students and our children are going to benefit from it. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Melata?
Yes.
Next, we have our retroactive approval overnight field trip for the Portage High School cheer team to UCA Cheer Camp in West Lafayette was on July 9th through the 11th. Do we have a motion to approve the retroactive field trip?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second, any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Melata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes.
Next, we have our overnight field trips by the Portage High School Girls' Cross Country Team Camp, July 29th through August the 1st in Angola, Indiana, and Varsity Girls' Cross Country Meet on August 16th and 17th in Terre Haute, Indiana. Do we have a motion to approve these overnight field trips?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Melata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay, now we have our approval of the fall play, The House on Haunted Hill. Dr. Stevens, do you have anything to add for this?
I will give you a synopsis of the play, and I will tell you that Mr. Stills has read the script and found it to be appropriate, so I will just read you a quick synopsis. It says, "You're cordially invited to a party to die for. Adapted from a Vincent Price, Vincent Price classic, The House on Haunted Hill tells the twisted tale of millionaire Frederick Lauren, his fourth wife, fourth wife Annabelle, and five money-hungry guests who will each receive $50,000 if they stay in a supposedly haunted house until sunrise. Filled with double crosses, a wicked sense of humor, and a restless spirit or two, Haunted Hill proves to be a night you'll never forget." I will also tell you that this is a play that has been adapted by our own, 2003 Portage High School graduate Tommy Jamerson. He is a thespian alumni of Portage Township High School, and he will also be here to be available to work with the students through rehearsal and the like. So that's quite an opportunity to, for our kids to both see someone from Portage that has made it in the, in that realm, as well as learn from someone who has some professional experience. So it's awfully a good, big opportunity for our kids.
Great, thank you. Yeah, his resume is impressive. Do we have a motion to approve the fall play, The House on Haunted Hill?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, call roll.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Melata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Okay. Now we have our contract service agreement subscriptions for transportation with Tyler Tech in Infinity I Curriculum IT for securely, for IT with Power School, Human Resources for Power School and Finance, HR, Power School Time Clock Plus. So we've got a list of contracts and service agreements. Dr. Stevens, anything we need to know about these?
Nothing new or in particular about them. You have seen these before. They are ongoing that we have used in the past.
Thank you. And these have all, I assume, been all reviewed by Attorney Elwood?
I assume so. I, I don't know that.
I would assume so.
I was going to say, I don't know that either one of them spoke to Ken about it, but...
Without Ken here, but yeah, I'm assuming he did too. So do we have a motion to approve the contract and service agreement subscriptions?
I make a motion to approve the contract service agreements and subscriptions. Second.
The motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, call roll, please.
Trustee Melata?
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
and we would like to have a definite path forward if we had some plumbing opportunity, or some plumbing difficulties. So this agreement would be if plumbing services would be needed, it guarantees the labor rate during, during the length of the agreement, which is seven-one to seven-one, and it also waives the seventy-dollar trip charge on service calls. Very good, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the plumbing service agreement with Circle R mechanic?
I make a motion to approve. Contract with plumbing service agreement.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Call, roll, please.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes. So next, we have our superintendent reports. Dr. Stevens, do you have a report for us this evening? I have a couple of comments. Just our, high school, summer school continues. It will go through July thirty-first. We did have one day that we did not hold classes because of the difficulties after the power outages. That will not be made up. It does not need to be, and it actually makes both of our sessions the same length with that loss of that day. Also, the elementary principals returned to our, their buildings today. A couple of them didn't return directly to their building because they have some ongoing construction, so they're doing, they're meeting in other areas and continuing their work. And then we will move forward from there. We will be hosting all of our new teachers on July thirty-first and August first, and we will be doing some internal trainings with our different directors on the thirty-first. And then on the first, we will have half a day with the, with a gentleman named Kevin Dill. I believe you guys have heard from him before or about him before. He will also work with all of our administrators for half of that day, and then he will return and meet with all of the staff throughout the district over the course of the first couple of weeks of school. We're looking forward to that. His message is very, both empowering but also holds you accountable for your actions. And so that's, that's a, that's a good way to start the year, something that we have kind of had that theme throughout the last couple of years. Dr. Alanis is obviously on vacation, so we wish her, hopefully she's not viewing this right now. It is relaxing a bit, and so we hope that, that she is enjoying that. Yes. The odds are she is viewing. Dr. Alanis.
We should weigh better.
I know, right? I did. Sorry. And as well, we, I just wanted to welcome John. John has been a vital part of our, of our staff already, and we're looking forward to having him leading Ailsworth as we move forward. So with that, I certainly appreciate your time. Thank you for letting me sit in for Dr. Alanis tonight. Thank you. Okay, I don't believe we saw any public comment forms come up. Our next meeting is August the twelfth, and that'll be at Willow Creek Middle School for our discussion. Does anybody have anything else this evening? Yes?
Just one thing. I had an opportunity this past weekend to hang out with Indiana Preps for football preseason for underclassmen and upperclassmen, and I wanna say congratulations. We have a kid here at Portage. His name is, oh, I'm gonna mess it up, so help me out, Mr. Shabloski. I got a feeling we, we both know him. Jay Jure?
Jay Jure Pleasant.
Jay Jure Pleasant, okay. Got it. He is one of the featured athletes. He actually is ranked really high as one of the kids in underclassmen for football this upcoming season. So I wanted to personally give him a shout-out, and that's from Indiana Prep, so just wanted to, I wanted to share that.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That is awesome.
Football season's right around the corner.
It's here. Just saying.
There was also recently, last week, I think, or two, in Major League Baseball Draft.
Yes.
Yes.
A Portage, a lot of Jeremy Revis was drafted by the New York Yankees.
Xavier Revis.
Xavier.